City Eureka Springs City Council, may I come to work? Ms. Clark, would you please call the room for the Spanish form. Madam Clerk, sorry.
Ken Pownell, absent with notice. James DeVito.
Here.
Parker Raphael, absent with notice. Lainey Balance.
Here.
Witchberry.
Present.
Aaron Lindblad.
Ah, present.
We have four.
Okay, thank you. Everybody, please stand for the place of leisure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
I would like to add Doc Pritchard to the hospital commission nomination.
For tonight?
No.
Okay.
No, we don't have enough. To take care of, yes ma'am.
I have several items of business I'd like to postpone.
Okay.
Number five, under unfinished business.
Second.
Second.
Number thirteen, under unfinished business.
Second.
Number one, under new business.
Second.
Number three, under new business.
Second.
Number four, under new business.
Second.
Number five, under new business.
Second.
Number seven, under new business.
Second.
Number eight, under new business.
Second.
Number eleven, under new business.
Second.
And number twelve, under new business.
Second.
Any further? Yes, no further?
I have a question.
Yes ma'am.
Under item eleven, under new business, discussion of standards. I don't remember exactly what that was referring to.
I don't know.
Madam Clerk.
It was very big. And those were the words used by Mr. Pownell. Oh, well, it looks like perhaps yours was.
I don't remember, but it very well could have.
Hang on.
I'd like to move postpone that, whatever it is.
Let's see, actually. It was your.
What is it?
Um, I don't know. I'm sorry, I just put what you said.
Standards?
Well, it says discussion of standards here.
It was cemetery, and it was the standards for all commissions. You were going to talk about parks, the, or so, the market, and then cemetery, there are bushes, and you like to talk about.
I think that got confused with the markers for Conway Springs and the cemetery.
Yes.
That should have been combined.
That was regarding that, that you did use, you did use that term.
Standards, okay. Well, I think that was, that was to be combined with the cemetery and parks. So I'd move postpone that.
What, a question?
Actually, I moved to remove it.
Number eleven?
Yes.
All right.
Is there a second on the removal?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of movement? I think we have to vote on the removal, don't we?
Yes.
Yes. From the agenda?
We do?
Should have to. That would be beyond the ordinary.
Okay.
Takes two to get it on, but two to take it off, I think you have to vote on. Yes ma'am.
Are we going to discuss it?
Yeah.
I think we should leave it on till Mr. Pownell gets back, since he was the one that seconded it. He must have had a reason, and he's not here to say what it is.
I'll agree with him on that.
So.
Move postpone then.
Maybe we'll take it off the next meeting.
If, um.
There's a motion to.
We've already moved to postpone and had a second.
Mr. DeVito will remove his second.
I'll move my second.
Move postpone.
It's already been moved to postpone and seconded.
No, it was moved to defer, to delete.
Actually, when I was doing all the postponements, number eleven was one that I moved to postpone and was seconded.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so all agreement is postpone, not delete? Okay, all right. Anybody else? Mr. DeVito.
I'd like to clarify for our guests tonight that there will be no discussion of Vine Street vacancy.
Okay, there's two different issues on here. Number ten's postponed, and then. Number seven, under new, is postponed, so apparently that is correct, even though there's going to be a hearing Wednesday night. I believe it is, 25th, at 6:30.
Okay, so there's no discussion of Vine Street tonight, then?
Apparently not, if y'all postponed it.
All right.
With a second, so. Thank you, guys.
Is that a planning commission meeting?
Apparently, the, the hearing is still on. I mean, the, the hearing is still on. Anybody else?
A stir in your pocket.
Motion to accept agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second? Need a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Um, next on the agenda is approval of the minutes for July the 23rd, 2012.
Is that approved?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. July the 9th, 2012.
Is that approved?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Next would be commission committee authority reports and expired terms. Beverly, do you have a bunch of stuff in the.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's in our packet, the appointment of Robert Schmidt, but I wanted to make that notice to the audience that Robert Schmidt has received approval for his nomination from the CAPC for the open seat.
Okay, I wasn't aware.
Yeah, it's in our packet, and. As the representative from the CAPC, I'd be placing his name and nomination.
Okay.
Your planning commission has been very busy. Tomorrow night, we have a meeting, and we have a public hearing for a setback variance at Five Paxos. We also have a public hearing for a conditional use permit at 255 Dairy Hollow. We also have discussed the Vine Street, and we will be bringing those findings to the public hearing on Wednesday at 6:30. We also saw a presentation from Parks for a proposed trail system from Harmon Park to Spring Garden, which we looked at thoroughly. And if you read the paper this week, you probably know that we started out discussing garage sales and yard sales, and it moved us into outdoor sales, and that moved us into the peddlers. So we have that at our table, and hopefully, we'll be bringing you more information about that. At the meeting that we had on July the 11th, it was voted on to send to you a definition for our bed and breakfast, just to clarify what the definition is. And so, at the end of today's meeting, if you would add that on to your next agenda, I would just appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
When you were talking about the bed and breakfast, were you also including changing the sign regulations? Because a lot of people have talked to me about the fact that when you have yard sales, even for yards and yards, as far as Dan I know, to the ordinance they give you, you can't put any off-site signs up. And I've had a lot of people request that maybe planning look at something like, you can put a sign up, off-site sign, or two, you know, 24 hours before, and then it has to be down 24 hours after. I've had a lot of people mention that to me.
There are a lot of issues with the sign ordinance that your planning commission would love to work on, but until this table finishes, that other one from a long time ago, we can't go there because nothing gets, gets through. So as soon as y'all get that part fixed, we'd be glad to work on sign ordinance.
Okay, great.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, uh, CAPC, Mr. Schmidt was apparently submitted, or nominated, and for the empty position on CAPC. Is that what you're referring to, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, state code, or city code specifies that the mayor shall nominate?
Uh, for that one, I think it was the CAPC.
I'm well versed in that, and the nomination comes from the CAPC.
If I may.
That's why I think it hasn't been on the table before.
State code.
City code says. Okay, I see. Filled by appointment made by the remaining members of the commission with the approval of the government body of the city. Thank you.
Okay. As far as the nomination of Schmidt, I have to say that we had a phone call today. One phone call against the nomination of Mr. Schmidt, and I told him I would put that on here, so there it is.
Thank you.
Uh, next is the hospital commission. Each one of you should have a letter from the commission asking that you reconsider MJ Sales' nomination to the hospital commission. You should have that in your packet. For parks, I don't have anything.
Excuse me, excuse me. Um, is that not something that was voted down a few meetings back?
It was voted down.
It was voted down a few meetings back? Well, according to the minutes from our last meeting, under unfinished business number three, it was noted, it was noted by the city attorney that a council member who voted with the majority could bring the topic back. So I gather that that would probably roll over into this. In other words, a council member who voted with the majority could bring the topic back. So it's probably really not appropriate for the mayor to bring this nomination back to the table, since we did vote it down. It would be appropriate for a council member who voted with the majority to bring the topic back.
Uh, Ms. Balance, I didn't bring it back to committee. The commission wrote y'all a letter. I didn't bring it up. The commission wrote you the letter, not me.
Well, then, somebody on the council would have to bring it back. Are you saying you're trying to bring up the nomination again?
No, I am not doing that. I'm just saying that, as a note, here under hospital, the commission wrote you a letter asking you to reconsider MJ Sales.
Okay, then.
That's all it is.
Then what we need to do is, is a council member who voted with the majority could bring the topic back, yes?
That's my understanding.
All right. Thank you.
That's correct, okay. Under parks, I don't have anything. Under SDC, I don't have anything. Cemetery, unless there's somebody here from any of these organizations, I don't see anybody. Yellow bag to be discussed later on, but it's been postponed.
Yes.
Under number one, new business. Deer hunt. Let's see, I think that one is still on for number six, under new.
There's none.
Okay. Moving right along. Under your unfinished business.
She left.
Oh, she did, okay, yeah. Number one's postponed. Number two would be discussion of ordinance, actually be the third reading of ordinance 2154, animal drawn vehicles. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Main seconded, floor is open for discussion. Mr. DeVito.
I would move to suspend the rules in place, ordinance number 2154, on its third reading, by title only.
The second?
Second.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Ms. Balance.
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Four zero.
Ordinance number 2154, and ordinance amended in title four, chapter 28 of the Eureka Springs Arkansas Municipal Code.
Mr. DeVito. Moved to approve ordinance number 2154 on its third reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Third reading.
Third reading.
Got to.
Sorry, third reading.
Need to do your parole call.
Ah, okay. If you can get that right. That's where you make the big bucks, right?
Ms. Lindblad.
Aye.
Ms. Balance.
Aye.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. Berry.
Yes.
Four zero.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to take a moment to thank everyone who has helped so much with bringing this ordinance forward and, and getting it passed and getting it hammered out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Number three, under unfinished business, ordinance 21, 2155, will be the limo ordinance, it'll be the second reading. Motion to discuss.
I move to discuss.
Second?
Second.
Main seconded, floor is open. Yes, ma'am.
As of our last reading, did, did we agree on one hour or two hour minimum?
One.
One?
It's like the one hour thing.
Correct.
Is that what it was?
What failed was a motion to read. And the motion failed 141. And then there was discussion about previous failed motion to read. And that's when Mr. Weaver noted that a council member who voted with the majority could bring the topic back. And that's where it was left. Oh, parole call vote followed on reconsideration, and that passed 420.
So we're still working with the draft that has, that specifies the one hour minimum, yes?
That's my understanding.
We don't have a revision.
Uh, yes. Yes, I sent out the, the one hour version on the 9th of July. So since it's different than the one that was initially read.
They amended it on their first reading, I believe. So it should be correct in your revision.
What would say?
I believe, if I'm not mistaken, in your first reading, not the last meeting, but the previous meeting to that, there was an amendment to one hour. And so, the, the version that she sent out on the 9th would be the corrected version that is currently being looked at, which is one hour.
Okay, so then what is the will of the table? Do we want one hour? Do we want two hours? I know we talked about that a little bit at the last meeting.
Mr. DeVito.
Well, my recollection from the last meeting is that it, it was rejected at, at the one hour, $75 an hour rate. It's only my assumption that council was wanting to make that two hours. I would pose to council, instead of regulating the price for limousines, if we want to do something to preclude limousines from acting as taxi cabs, that we instead place just a two hour delay between notification of the limousine service and accepting a ride. So that would give a two hour lead time for a limo to receive a reservation and then to pick up, rather than encumbering somebody by requiring a minimum of a two hour rental on any given night, that's going to basically give them about maybe maximum of three rentals in an evening. If you kept it, if you kept it up to the limousine operator to take as many rides as he can and restrict it to a two hour wait between the time you call the limo and the time you pick it up, then that's going to preclude it from acting like a taxi cab. I would prefer that we not encumber the business by requiring that there be a two hour rental. Some people might only want to rent it for an hour, and that's going to lose, they're going to lose customers.
Any further?
What is the motion on the table, please?
The change is two hours. Is that correct?
Well, there's no motion, we're in this session. But if you'd like a motion, I would move that we require a two hour waiting period between contact with the limousine and pickup.
And deletion of the minimum fares.
Of the minimum fares, thank you.
I second that. For discussion.
Okay. We want to make sure we get it right for the record, so we can repeat it for the record and vote on it as, as you say.
Be amended?
Okay, you need to repeat?
No.
Okay. Okay, is there a second? Does everybody understand the motion?
We seconded.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know that that's such a good idea, because how would that be enforced? It wouldn't, how would you enforce that to protect the taxi? I mean, how would you know that somebody called, who's going to be checking? And this is going to be done on private telephones? So I don't know that it's such a good idea. I think actually that the two hour rate is a better one, because that way you're guaranteeing that you know what's going on.
Mr. DeVito.
I could pose the same question. How do you know that they're going to, to be abiding by that? Basically, the laws are there for people to abide by. And almost everyone abides by the law. We do not have the wherewithal to check up on every single law that's out there to see if people are abiding by it. Trust me, if there is some breaking of the law, chances are the competition is going to make it well-known to authorities that that is the case. I, I prefer to believe that most people abide by the law, and if we pass a law, most everyone is going to abide by it. We have no way of checking up on every law we have on the books.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Well, one way that this could be checked up on is to look at the records of the company and see if the rentals work for two hours. Where the other way, I don't think we have any way to check on it.
Mr. Weaver.
If you go into their books, to look at their books, you don't have authority to do that. So you.
Even if they're issued a license by the city?
Business license is not going to require that, and you're not creating a franchise. So you're not going to have the right to look at their books.
Then how do we know, for instance, if a CAPC is, I mean, I mean, Bed and Breakfast is paying what they should? How do we know? How do, how do we know, I mean, by their taxes they pay? Or, I mean, how do we know, for instance, if a B&amp;B is paying what they should be paying?
We have the right, under state law, to audit those, and under city code, by the virtue of the tax that's placed on them. It's a separate tax approved for advertising and promotion. And we have the right to use the state through, if necessary, to audit also because of virtue of the tax.
How about the, how about the, the, that when the people file their taxes at the end of the year? If they'd had, if they said they had 100 pickups, then they should have 100 times $150 that they are paying taxes on. Could we not look at that? Is that not the type of public record?
No, you cannot use the taxes in that form. And you cannot require them to tell you how many rides they gave during the year.
Any further? All right, would you please repeat the, yes, ma'am.
Then I say by just virtue of a law that can be more protected, we should have a two hour minimum, rather than a two hour for pickup. Because to me, that's way unviolate. Verifiable. Verifiable.
Then I would like to amend the previous motion to stip, to stipulate two hour minimum. $75 per hour.
I'll second.
We already have a, a motion and amendment.
We do have a motion.
We can amend motions.
Mr. DeVito.
I just find it rather appalling. I, I find it rather appalling that, that we're regulating a person's ability to make a living here. You basically have, you basically will legislate out of existence every one hour limousine ride that they can make in the city. And I can think of a lot of people that would like a one hour limousine ride, if, you know, if for nothing else than to just go around and see the sights of the city. I, you know, it's verifiable, it's as verifiable to require a two hour, $75 per hour rate as it is to require a two hour lag time. You have, you don't have the ability in either situation to, to determine whether or not they're abiding by the law. Now, if somebody at council can tell me how requiring a two hour, $75 an hour fee is going to be identifiable, I would like to hear it.
Yes, ma'am.
Because it would be in their advertising, so people would know right ahead of time that that's what the deal was.
Mr. Berry.
Well, that could be said, the same thing for the two hour wait call, two hours beforehand for reservations. I'm uncomfortable with, with dictating a fee for a business, a rate for a business. I think we all received emails regarding that issue, and whether or not, even though Hot Springs does that, whether or not that's actually allowable by state law. I don't think that's ever been established yet. I think going ahead with the, the two hour reservation time can be just as easily documented by advertisements as anything else. And I think I'm, I'm much more comfortable with that. I'm not sure, Eureka Springs is not that big a town. One of our advertisements that we, we play on is that everything's within 10 minutes of one another. So an hour ride in a limousine is going to cover a lot of the town. Even if you had a tour, and I don't, I don't think our, even our tours last an hour from the tram tours. So a limousine ride for an hour, or two hours, might be really excessive. I mean, you're going to have to be going out to, you know, a lot of other places. Beaver Town, Beaver Dam, Hogs Call, or wherever, to, to be able to get two hours in and get your money's worth of it. So I'm not sure that, I'm real comfortable with the, you know, any of the, the two hour minimum on there.
Ms. Balance.
Even though I did suggest that the last time.
Ms. Balance.
I would move to postpone this until the second meeting in August.
Second.
Okay.
I think you still have a motion on the table.
We've got the original motion, and we've got the amended motion.
Does not postpone to a certain time override?
Table will.
Table? Well, then I will rescind my motion to postpone and move to table this until the second meeting in August.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. You, you still have a motion on the table?
Well, moved, moved to table overrides all those motions, I believe.
All right. Just making sure that everybody knows where we're at. Is there a second?
I had a second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You've got to have a roll call to table it.
Okay.
Oh, all right.
Aye.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Four zero.
Okay. Number four postponed, number five postponed, number six ordinance 2156, revision of appendix A, it'll be the third reading. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Lady and seconded, floor is open.
Move to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2156 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
It's a beer roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Four zero.
Next would be, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 2156 and ordinance amending appendix A of chapter 14 of the Eureka Springs municipal code.
Move to approve ordinance number 2156 on its third reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call. Third reading.
Third reading, okay. I'm going to get me a list.
It works.
Ms. Balance?
Aye.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Four zero.
Okay. Thank you. Number seven, under unfinished, is ordinance 2157, the ward map revisions. This will be the second read, and I believe this is, currently has a emergency ordinance attached to it that we were advised by the election commission that had to be on the statute, under the ordinance for tonight, otherwise it will not be on the ballot come November if it's not done tonight. You can't vote in the ward that you live in, that's under my understanding. How was explained to you?
It, it creates a logjam for the people who are filing, and that's really the key element, is to make it possible for them to do their work in preparation for the election.
Okay. To interpretation-
So, Mr. Mayor, we need to read this. Is this our second reading?
Yes.
Do we need to read second and third tonight?
Second and third and the emergency ordinance.
Is, is this not the third reading? We did read it for the second time on, on the ninth.
Okay. I'll let Madam Clerk talk about that.
When it came time to do the roll call vote, it didn't occur. Went ahead and read the ordinance title, and then I checked with Mr. Weber later to find out, since we didn't go through that very significant step, do we need to double back? And his advice was yes. So, the folks on the election commission would be really pleased if we could do the second and third tonight.
Okay. So we're all agreeing that this will be the second reading and third reading and emergency clause? Yes, Mr. Weber?
I would move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2157 on its second reading by title only.
Checking.
Lady and seconded? Fourth?
Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Four zero. election wards with an emergency clause.
Mr. Weber?
I would move to approve ordinance 2157 on its second reading.
Second.
Fourth?
Fourth.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Weber?
I would move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2157 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
I'm not even going to ask this time.
Because you know. Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Four zero.
Mr. Weber?
I'd move to approve ordinance 2157 on its third reading.
Hello?
Oh, I'm sorry, you got to read.
No problem.
Okay.
Ordinance number 2157 and ordinance redistricting the Eureka Springs election wards with an emergency clause.
Move to place ordinance number 2157 on its third reading.
Second.
I think we just had the third reading, did we not?
Approved. Wasn't that title only? No? Now to approve.
Now to approve.
Not to read, yeah.
That was suspended, the rules read, now it's approved.
Now just move to approve on its third reading.
Move to approve.
Two second?
We need a second.
I did.
You didn't, okay. Keep it. Trying to keep track here.
Yes.
Mr. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Four zero.
Mr. DeVito?
I'd move to read the emergency clause.
Second.
Are you reading it for approval or just reading it? Reading for approval. Thank you.
Who wants a second?
Mr. Berry, second?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's got to be a roll call.
Okay.
Yeah, roll call.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Lindblad?
Yes.
Ms. Balance?
Yes.
Four zero.
Done. Okay, just we move on.
Have to read the emergency clause. Sorry.
Okay, that's right.
That whereas time is of the essence as a result of the upcoming filing period for the 2012 city council elections, and to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, an emergency is hereby declared, and this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon its passage by council and signing by the mayor.
Need to go on?
Done.
All right. That will move us on to number eight. The building permits, parking lots, demolition, and construction ordinance, not planning? Yes, ma'am. Come on up.
Do I have it?
Okay. That's right, they did. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Floor is open.
Not sure if I had this.
I don't.
I do.
I don't have one.
Do you have?
I don't have, I don't think I have a copy with me either.
Where they were, I didn't get them.
Yes, ma'am.
Since several of us are apparently just receiving this information, I would move to postpone this issue until our next meeting.
Motion made to postpone, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any further? If not, all in favor? Okay.
Has this been run by the city attorney?
The city attorney wrote it, y'all voted to me at the last meeting.
Okay. Well, for some reason, I, I'm looking at it for the first time tonight. I don't know why. And it seems to be the consensus here at the table that we're just now getting it.
It just came to the end of myself yesterday, so I assumed that she sent it to you all, but I don't know.
No.
Okay, motion made to postpone the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Which, which meeting we want to postpone it to?
Next meeting.
Next?
Next meeting would be fine.
Okay. I'll bring you a copy of that then.
Move to number nine, removing weekly from dwelling unit description, be planning. All in favor? Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Checking.
Floor is open for discussion.
And this one, at the last meeting, y'all also sent to the city attorney, and the city attorney has some recommendations for you before the ordinance is written, and then I will need some help and instruction.
Having looked at this, and there was some communication, I think, between different individuals in the city, there apparently are some properties that are operating legally at this time on a weekly basis. Or maybe, I'm not going to say they are for certain because, but if we're going to create this, term grandfather is wrong legally.
Legally non-conforming.
But legally non-conforming list needs to be created if there are properties that meet all of requirements. And I'm told there may very well be properties that meet all the requirements to be legally non-conforming for the future. And so if we're going to create the ordinance, the ordinance is either going to have to have an appendix with those properties, or those properties should be listed in the body of the ordinance in some way, so that we don't have five years from now, somebody trying to figure out, was this property or was it not in existence at the time in that form? So it should be allowed to exist in the future.
Mr. Weber?
How are you determining that there are properties operating legally within the city with weekly rentals?
One of the requirements that I think would give us a clue would be that if they are operating on a weekly basis, under our current code, they should be paying tax through the CAPC. And if they're not paying that, then they're probably not legally operating on a weekly basis. Because we require properties renting for a month's term or, or less than a month's term, collect a CAPC tax.
Ms. Ballance, you had your hand up.
I did. As I've been thinking about this and talking about it with other people, I wondered about my own home. I wondered if I wanted to go off to, say, Europe for a month, and I wanted to rent my own home on a weekly basis while I was gone. I wouldn't necessarily want to jump through all the CAPC hoops and so forth and what have you, and, and pay all of that sort of stuff. If I wanted to go somewhere for a week and rent my house out for that week while I was gone, it would be, it would be a burden for me to go through all the steps I would need to go through to rent my house out for one week out of 52 weeks of a year. And so I'm not sure how I feel about all this. I would like to have the freedom to do with my own property to be able to rent it out for a week, should I so choose to do so. So that's where I'm having a little sticky point on this issue.
Right now, the way the law is written, you can't do that. So the change is not affecting that. Right now, you're required, if you rent it out for a week, to collect the tax and pay the tax.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Quirky.
Since this subject came up, at least five people have come in to get licenses. So technically, there are some legally non-conforming.
So instead of closing the loophole quietly and easily, we are herding them through, and there is the problem.
Mr. Berry?
Would it be of any benefit to, or should we even look at establishing a moratorium until this is resolved? Although we won't be able to get that done until next, our next meeting, but it might be quicker than trying to-
I think if you are actively pursuing the issue, that a moratorium would be in your possible best interest to stabilize the situation until you can determine whether it does need addressed or not. It would have to be a moratorium on probably the issuance of business license for this type of property.
Somebody else?
I'd say, could we have a, something written for a moratorium on this?
It'd have to be a resolution, or an ordinance. Resolution or not?
A resolution could probably be drafted on a break, if you take a break tonight. It might have to be handwritten, if you want it that quickly.
It's not on the agenda.
Well, it's a matter of concern. I think there's people taking, I'm sorry, there's people taking advantage of the issue right now. Contrary to, I mean, what Ms. Balance is saying, she's obviously, may not be in favor of this, but it's a business within a neighborhood district, and the whole purpose of our conditional use permits for overnight lodging and bed and breakfast was to eliminate commercial businesses in residential units and residential neighborhoods. You know, and I think this is, I think we need to stop the loophole as soon as possible if this is the issue that, that we're concerned about.
Mr. Weber?
Well, if they're getting a business license, they have to get a CUP in order to operate. Is that not correct?
That's, that's the whole issue there. These that say weekly rentals don't have to have a CUP at all, because that's the loophole, that weekly part. You could rent, you know, if you had another home, you could rent it out by the month or by the year. If you had another home and you wanted to use it as rental property, that's not a problem. But that weekly one, people are really doing overnight lodging and calling themselves weekly rentals and moving their business into your residential neighborhood again, blocking the street, making the traffic, without going through the proper procedures.
What category of business license were they obtaining?
The catch-all, 199. Until this can get ironed out.
Somebody else? You think, Ms. Blankenship? Yep. Okay. So what's the status?
I would move to draft a resolution, to ask the city attorney to draft a resolution at our next break of the moratorium on weekly rentals.
Checking.
Actually, it may not be possible if they're getting the catch-all.
Actually, it may not be possible if they're getting the catch-all. We would have to eliminate the catch-all for the time being. And that may be putting a hamper on other legitimate business. I'd take that risk.
Do you have to refund the license fee?
Not the ones that are out. Moratorium would only operate on future.
Okay.
Second.
The moratorium would only operate on future issued, not the five that have been issued in the last week.
Understand.
We are speaking about it here on camera today, and letting people know that they're gonna have to get on the list to be legally nonconforming, to be in the code. Tomorrow, we'll do the same at the planning commission. We already know who received their business licenses. We can come back at the next city council meeting with that list, hopefully. And you'll read it three times, that'll be their only chance to get their business in the code book before they become not legal. So it will be, you know, they will be coming in to be on the list. The hardest part is for me to have to verify, because some of them really haven't collected taxes and really haven't done business yet. They just started business last week so that they could get in this book, so that they could get in this code. Some of them were... A couple that I know about, we found out that they were tourist lodgings, but they did not have CUPs correct for their tourist lodging. So when the planning commission told them that they were gonna have to shut down their business because they were not operating correctly as a tourist lodging with a CUP, they found the loophole and said, well, then we'll just be a weekly rental.
Could we incorporate in the resolution properties that are presently collecting the CAPC tax? That they would then have to proffer to us receipts showing that they have collected the CAPC tax? You can require them to show it, but if they only start operating last week, they will not have had a reporting period pass in order to have that receipt until sometime after next month. Because there's a lag in reporting of the collection of the tax. It's not an immediate pay-through.
Mr. Berry.
Well, don't we already have, can't we tell that just because they have the business license? We know five units that have already established a business license.
Well, they're, to be legally nonconforming, they really need to collect the tax, and they need to have the business license both, so...
If they have at least the business license, we know... I mean, what we're trying to do is get the moratorium to prevent any new establishments.
And I think you can do that with a moratorium on the business license at this point. Because I don't know how you would put a moratorium on them collecting your tax, because you want them to continue, the real ones to continue collecting the tax.
We can do the moratorium on the business license.
But to establish the appendix, or to establish which ones are actually gonna be nonconforming for future reference, they need to be doing both.
Well, if we have a moratorium for a three-month period, that would give them a three-month period, the theory is they're gonna do it or they're not.
And unless you pass it with an emergency clause, it's just gonna take effect for a while anyway, there'll be a reporting period passed during that time period.
Any further? Is your motion on the table?
There's a suggestion.
To instruct the city attorney at the next break to draft a resolution with a 90-day moratorium on the issuances of any business licenses under catch-all 199.
Is it a second?
Yeah, I had seconded it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Three ones. Okay. I believe that...
Okay.
Was that?
Passed, failed, what happened?
Passed.
Are you voting aye?
Yeah, I would aye.
Yes, yeah.
Do the resolution. Oh, there you are, we were just about to call you. All right, number 10 under unfinished business has been postponed by a street vacation. Number 11 is EMS fees ordinance amendment, and Mr. Pettis is now joining us. He is on duty, so if he gets a call, he's out of here.
Good evening.
Evening.
Did you guys get the revision of the ordinance?
Let's see.
Yes, no?
Let me make this official, motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
You're okay. Main executive?
Yes.
Floor is open for discussion, go ahead, Mark. Yeah, we had to do a little preambulation.
Yeah, understand. I sent to the city attorney, did you get a chance to review that?
I've seen it, I don't have any problems with it.
Can we pass out a copy? So I've taken the codes out and just put English for each charge. So I think it's gonna be a little bit more understandable for the average citizen, so when they're looking at the code, it'll be easier for, I mean, looking at the charges, it'll be easier for them to understand what their charges are for. And so, none of you have?
I don't either.
Okay.
We'll take care of it. You got other stuff to talk about, go ahead.
That's really all I've got, so...
Okay.
Do you want to?
We did give this order.
Talk about something else till she gets back?
Yes.
Yeah, you can, can I give us a rundown on what's been going on with the FB and other ones?
Awesome, this year has been busy. We are 150 calls up over last year. So that's, last year we averaged around three calls per day, EMS calls. And this year, we're averaging right about four calls a day. So that's really a huge increase in the number of EMS calls that we've been given. People ask us about it, we just tell them that, well, we're doing such a good job of saving people's lives, we get repeat business.
There you go.
Since they're alive. But... Very, very dry on the fire season. We've been really fortunate in Eureka, in the surrounding area, that we've had very little, very little grass fires and brush fires. There's a burn ban in the city and in the county, and so... But even at that, there are some folks that have been burning. And in other areas, Rogers, Fayetteville, Berryville, they've had some really bad brush fires, so just be very vigilant, and the public, please be very vigilant about not burning anything and reporting any fire immediately, because it's really spreading fast. I'd like to thank our transit department for offering to assist. We ended up not needing them, but we had a multiple casualty situation, where we had four or five people reported unconscious just west of Eureka, off of a church bus. And so they had pulled down, their church bus broke down, and several kids were reportedly unconscious. And so, we didn't know if there was a possible toxic situation, like a CO, we've had those in the past with buses. And we called the transit department to send a trolley or some mode of transportation down just in case that they couldn't get back on their bus, and we wouldn't leave them out there in the hot sun. And as it turned out, there was only some heat injuries, heat exhaustion and stress, and so we transported five patients to Eureka Hospital, and they're all doing fine.
Great. Thank you, Bob. Any questions for Bob while he's here? Grab a chair, just do your thing here. Just to read in the record, this was ordinance 2158. Any discussion? There should have been.
Has there been a reading yet on this?
Uh, with the amendments, I don't think so. Since this is, this is the first amended copy I've seen here.
My records indicate that on the ninth, we had the first reading.